Opportunity, I've had the opportunity to discuss our preliminary budget and have produced this. Obviously, one of the big issues before the city information in the city is funding a number of agencies that made application for funding this year. You will recall that my recommendation to you, that one of our budget constraints was to continue funding the existing agencies funded from the current budget at the existing level, and to consider funding the two new applications that we received. And then we have the question remaining with regard to senior citizen center and how to deal with a bit of a mixed process in terms of our local center, not receiving federal funds through the area development district, if you have your head. Except for the agency funding question that was open before you, we're making progress on the budget and I still intend to deliver to you a proposed budget nice Thursday, come out, it's the 28th of the week of this month. Tonight, we have, I believe, four issues that I wanted to raise up with you. The application of Pioneer Playhouse, they're seeking $3,000, as you recall, for the Humane Society, which is requesting a $10,000 approval, funding both of those two agencies. This is the first time that they have sought funding from the city. Then the senior citizen issue, this is the third issue. I would be happy to answer any particular question that you may have regarding the budget or what their level of funding end is. Let me stop there and see if there's questions or discussion regarding the agencies listed here.
Excuse me, so you're looking actually for numbers to plug in the budget tonight, optimally?
Well, optimally, if we're able to do so. We may not be able to do so in all instances, but it was my belief, although I don't know if there was any final action taken on this, but the recommendation I made to you, I thought was generally accepted or at least considered that we do a continuation funding for all the other agencies. And if that is true, and if we can resolve the agencies that are still not, that are new or the question mark on the senior citizen, we may be able to avoid a day-long meeting on Thursday this week to consider approving each and every individual agency that requests for funding and accept the concept that we're sorting the continuation budget this year. So if we're able to address these four agencies tonight, and you're good with the earlier recommendation, even if you are not completely able to resolve all issues tonight, and that might be postponed to our second regular meeting in a month, Tuesday following Memorial Day, that would give me a couple of days to wrap up the budget into a preliminary budget or a rather proposed budget on the 28th of the 20th. Is that clear?
Yes.
And I do have recommendations on some of these items tonight. I want to hear what you have on it, or just want to get your discussion.
Yeah, I think, I'm sorry, I think I'd like to hear them, and then certainly open up some discussion here with my fellow commissioners, but let's hear your recommendations first, is what I say.
Well, that being said, I would recommend that you consider funding approval in the budget for Pioneer Playhouse. It's a small amount, and they contribute a large amount to the economy in terms of their activities. The $3,000, as I recall, is to the earmarked for the development of the play that involves people in the community. It's a small amount to support a viable arts center in our community, so I would say we fund that for the year going forward. And I think there may be representatives here to speak to that, and you should give your comments and previous causes and your comments.
Yeah, I think this is good, taking one at a time. I'm in favor of that, too. It is a small amount, and it's to our cultural community.
I'm good with your motion to that effect, or would you?
Probably just consensus or inclusion, giving direction to including a proposed budget. I think that is consensus, and I don't hear a lot of questions or objections, and you'll have opportunity, unfortunately, to consider a proposed budget in its complexity and completeness if they have the money, and then we can take final action to it on that budget, which may be one.
We're discussing and ultimately voting on allocations only?
Yes.
Not the entire budget?
Yes.
Just one question.
Right, just for that one item, just that one item. The second item, I may continue, Mayor, is the request from our Humane Society to have a $10,000 grant to assist them in their capital buildings project. They made an impassioned plea for information, I think, recently when we heard of all the funding requests. They raised, as I recall, a close $1.5 million, or will someone complete that adoption center? It seems like a very worthy one-time expenditure for the city. They're requesting more from the county, I think, in terms of this building project. So it's an example of city county cooperation, I think, to help that lead project to fruition.
How do you feel?
Personally, I think, I appreciate the way they went about things, Mayor and I talked about this. They raised 80 percent of it before they came here, and I appreciate that fact, and would like to help them on some level, if you think we can squeeze all that out of the budget. I would not be opposed to that at all.
How do you feel?
I think we can, and again, it's a one-time, a one-time confirmation under a very advanced measure.
Mr. Atkins, all right?
I'm in favor of both of those.
Okay.
But I would like to direct us for either C and D to move to a grid public. That's effective public speak about C and D, those are, those are two, I say, probably because they're controversial. But wrong before I do that, though, I've got the witness, I'm trying to find the witness that the corporations are there.
You've all got the part of the witness.
I just want to, I want to tell you your attention about, I support funding the agencies at last year's level, except the one that I'm a member of, that's CCHR, where you had given us $1,000, $5,000 last year, and we're only requesting $1,000. Hope your proposal will change that now.
Yes, and clarity, the recommendation made was to find continuation, except for those agencies, who made that couple, yours was one of those, they requested more amount, and we're going to incorporate the whole request into the continuation.
Commissioner Atkins, if I could, I would, I would be pleased if you would defer to Mr. Scott to complete his recommendation before we go to any here the public. Would you humor me on that one?
Well, I would, but I think because, I think it's important that we do what we think is right by the citizenry, but also I think it's important that we do what's right by people who work for the city. In this case, I think it would be really pretty wrong to neck out in front of something that doesn't be out in front of. We're going to hear lots and lots and lots and lots and lots of comments to make, and people will concern about if we fund the senior citizens, which I think we are, and where that funding is going to go. I think it's important to hear from those citizens. And I hope they have some representatives who are going to speak on their behalf, and I heard one's going to speak, but I don't want to put Ron out there saying that's a number, and I don't know where that amount might end up, where that amount might end up going.
Everybody okay with that?
That's fine.
I got one question, though. There was a grant money that went to Bluegrass Community Action, and I think that the senior citizens' folks were challenging that. Has anything changed on that?
My, probably one of the speakers might need to address that specifically.
Very good. So you can retract your neck, Mr. Scott, and we will, we'll continue on. I'm going to, Mr. Atkins, if you're okay with me bifurcating and having senior citizens' figures first, followed up by Bluegrass Community Action after that, is that okay?
And I think it's important that we simply try and do it both constituencies.
Do we have a time limit? What are we going to do on that? Oh, we're going to be here. You have three minutes? Three minutes? Okay.
Three times sixty, we hope.
And in light of all of our time, I understand that the passions are high, I got that, and we all understand that. But in light of, in light of all of our collective value of time, if a point has been made two or three times, I would ask you to leave it at two or three times. So with that said, let's begin. Whoever is interested in speaking on behalf of senior citizens, the floor is yours.
Mayor, prior to starting, sometimes you, in the past, we've limited to time and number per side. Is it the desire of the commission to do that in time only, or number of advocates for each side? Because if you're going to make that decision, it's easier to make that now than in an hour.
I think that's reasonable.
I think it's a good point, too, and I think it falls in line with your request, Mayor, and that was not to have several people come up and say the same thing. So if it's already been said, you may just make, raise your hand if you're in favor of it, and we don't have to hear it over and over.
Can we get an idea of how many people actually want to speak?
Everybody who wants to speak on behalf of senior citizens, raise your hand. One, two, I see about five or six. All right, let's, we're, we're, how about six? Six? Okay, Mr. Rowland, what was your side?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. My name is Bob Rowland, I'm the vice chair of the Board of Directors for the Senior Citizen Center located here in Danville on Gene Drive, and I've been asked to speak on behalf of the Board of Directors this evening. So since there are sixty of you here, and you all get three minutes, I think I'm going to break you for any time. The city has a decision to make regarding, first of all, the allocation of funds, and then, secondly, who gets those funds that they're going to be allocated. I've been asked to kind of give the commission a little bit of background as to why we're in that particular position. We applied through Bluegrass Act for approximately $108,000, and matched that with $11,000 to make our, our funding, so that we would be in a position where we were last year, coming to the city, then requesting $66,005, and going to the county requesting funding from them. Those funding sources would then allow us to feed the needy people, senior citizens of our community, with meals on wheels, and also bring them into our center and feed them their, those who come to the center for meals. We made that application process at the meeting where the awards were made. It was announced that Bluegrass Cap had received that, that grant, that award, and we did not. We had several questions and issues with the process, the application process, and our request was simply that the field be level, so that when we are applying for these funds and somebody else applying for them, they all are pretty much in the same category. A couple of, just a couple of examples of issues that we had. One is that specifically in the application, we had to list an address, a local address, from which we were going to provide services. We have that on Gene Drive. Unfortunately, Bluegrass Cap did not. Question was raised, they were given a 90-day time period to secure an address. In our opinion, the application wasn't complete, and they were awarded the funds anyway. Secondly, we buy meals through Bluegrass Cap, so they had access to our numbers, how much meals cost, how many we had, so they had access, pretty easy to underdo, you know, what the costs are going to be. We raised these issues with Bluegrass Act, and there are several others, I wouldn't win all of them, but those, the big ones, raised those issues with Bluegrass Act, and they said we could file the appeal process, excuse me, which we did. I met with, Joel and I met with them and filed our appeal, and basically, every issue that we raised, they acknowledged that there was some concern there, they would review it, they would look into it, and the process would be refined for next year. Obviously, that doesn't help us at this point. So we're here because, I'm sorry, it's on the basis.
I'm just saying it's three minutes if they want to.
Want to continue?
How close are you, Mr. Rowland?
Well, I would like to make three quick points about it. We would like to, we would like to request that the city keep local dollars local. We would like to be the organization that feeds the people of our community, the senior citizens, we have a number of folks here that represent the concern that they have about the services that they would receive, and we ask that the local tax dollars be kept locally, and we would continue to feed the citizens of this community. Second thing is that if we provide a service, that we don't think other organizations can provide. That is, that we visit each of these homes every day, five days a week, and provide a hot meal, and our drivers check on our homes, and just in the last couple of weeks, one of our drivers, delivering a meal, found a lady lying on the floor, she knew she was going to be there, she followed, crawled to a spot where we would see her, he was able to get assistance for her. We need to be sure that we can care for our people in a local way, and be responsible for the folks, because we care about them, and we're going to make sure they get service. And then we look at transparency. Our organization is open, our meetings are open, our records are open, we want to be sure that people know what's going on, and we want to be sure that everything that is, that needs to be open, is open. We question a group that sends people to see our facility. We had a couple of people come into our facility last week, come in the back door, admittedly, they may have found the wrong door, but they came in, wandered around, asked by one of our personnel what they were doing there, and who they were, and what they needed. They said they were from Bluegrass. Well, Bluegrass, what? And so finally, we found that they were from Bluegrass Cap, they were coming to pass out information to our clients, and to pass out applications to our employees. That's just not the way we want to do business. I'll leave you with this, I'm sorry that we have to talk so fast, because there's lots to share, but I'll leave you with this. A couple of years ago, a few years ago now, Red Cross came into town, said they're going to regionalize Red Cross services, we wouldn't know any difference, we're all going to go to Lexington. I ask you today, is the Red Cross presence the same as it was several years ago in Danville, and are the services the same? I think you know the answer.
Thank you, Mr. Rowland. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of senior citizens? Yes, ma'am. If you would, if you would.
I can, I can show.
That's right, they're going to bring the mic to you.
This is Alberta Wood, and I've been in Danville all my life, and Mike Perry, I remember when you were crawling around on the floor.
I'll tell everybody.
That was last week.
Mr. Atkins has been in my home many times, when we had Christmas parties, from senior citizens of my church. The only thing I want to say is, how many people in this audience agrees with what Mr. Rowland said? Can we get that vote, can we just draw hands? I dare agree with you.
Anyone else like to address on behalf of senior citizens?
I've been coming to, I'm Bernice Johnson, and I've been coming to the senior citizens since 1995, and I find that they help and everything just fine, and we, we help each other, and it would be sad if we didn't get funding to help us stay, stay afloat, because a lot of people would be old and wouldn't be out enjoying their self, and we have friends, friends there, and we would like, we just hope you'll do the right thing for us.
Thank you. We've got, we've got a lady back here in the back.
Hi, my name is Annette Nolan, and I became affiliated with the senior citizens when I was a nineteen-year-old. I worked at the center up on Fourth Street, and then in the, in my thirties, I worked at the one out on Gene Drive. And I'm in here in support of the center because I have seen all the different programs that are offered by this center, the body recall. I sat through a class where they taught them if they start to fall, how to fall so they don't break a bone. You know, I've been a part of the Meals on Wheels, the Home Health, I've seen it all. And I don't think you all realize that if, how lucky you are to have such a wonderful center. And, you know, for some of these people, this is the only socialization they have. And if you take, cut their programs, they don't get the funding, if they don't have the programs, they lose the socialization, and then you have lonely people that fall through the cracks, that end up in nursing homes because they can't live on their own. And that's really all I'm just saying.
Thank you. Two more speakers for senior citizens.
I am Ruth Young. I've been attending the senior center for more than twenty-five years or more. The center is thirsty for me. If they close that center down, I would be in a terrible predicament, would know what to do or what your way to turn. It is real thirsty for me.
Thank you, ma'am. And lastly.
I'm Margaret McConnell Jones, and I'm probably the newest person on the board, and I don't have the longevity or the history that a lot of you all have with the center, but I can tell you, being a board member, that I am very proud to be a member of that board. These people have worked tirelessly, they have worked hours to try to bring this center back to where it is, bringing wonderful programs to these people. We are not paid, but we put in the hours that it takes to bring this, to bring this center, the programs, and the facilities, and the, and the programs that these people really need and want. And this is the passion that this board has for this center. And we do it because we love the people, and we love the center, and the people that put in the hours, like Louise, and, and Ryan, and Bob, they have put in their hours and their time to do this, and we applaud everyone who works there, and we thank you, and it is a center worth saving.
Now we'll begin our speakers for Bluegrass Community Action. And again, we'll have six, and we'll limit that to around three minutes, first speaker. Is there anyone on behalf that would like to speak? Yes, please come forward, give us your name.
It's good to see you all again. My name is Jordan Robinson, the executive director for Bluegrass Community Action Partnership. I understand, I got a booth back there in the back coming in. Let me, can I ask everybody a question, and you give me a honest answer here? How many people in this room have received LIHEP or crisis intervention through the community development office here in town, Donlin? Any of you guys get LIHEP?
What is that, sir?
LIHEP is the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program. Subsidy operates from November through the end of December for utility assistance. Anybody get that? Okay. Anybody in here get senior commodities? Have a couple here. Anybody in here involved in the senior companion program? Is anybody in here involved with the senior companion program? Okay?
Through our home care program, through the heating assistant, and the commodities they give them, and their career to do them, and we helped build to get the papers they need to create, to do their applications, so they'll get their heating assistance.
Okay, so you, so you do those applications and take them to the community development office? Okay. Is anybody in this room written Bluegrass Health and Transit Service, or Dan Transit? Nobody?
We can't get them, you know, our clients, our clients, not from the center, we can't get them, and we go to a call center that's somewhere else, they say, you have to call this, that number. I had a bit of a client here called, he wanted a way to Lexington, but we couldn't get through. So, yeah, we tried it all, but we can't get anybody.
Because it's not in this community, it's outside this community.
Do what?
Because you're calling outside the community. If they called here, they'd be able to get the service they needed. But it's not local.
No.
Because you do that, right?
Yes, I do almost, yeah. And actually, that's a 1-800 number. And the reason, this is the point I was bringing up, guys, we're being made to be an outsider here, we're not an outsider here. We've been around for fifty years. No, we have not run the senior center here in this community for fifty years, but we do, everything that we do is for the low-income and the elderly, in all of our nine accounts. We do a lot of things for Wool County. The statement that was made about the applications and us knowing how much money was put on those applications, we didn't change any numbers on our applications, because if you will look at the application rules, they clearly put on there that budgets carry no weight. Don't ask me why, I thought it was silly myself, but if you'll check the application, the budget's carrying no weight. Local money, staying local. A lot of you all don't understand how our organization works. Every dollar that is in that community stays in that, in that community. If somebody wants to make a donation to a specific program of ours, it goes directly to that program, all they have to do is write a memo, and that's with all of our accounts.
And then they call the 800 number to hope for service, right? After they give you the money and.
We need that, we need that, we're out of order.
I apologize.
And Troy, if I may, let me ask you to direct your comments to the commission.
Okay, okay. Again, we've been around for a long time. We're being posed here as an outsider, and that's not the case. We do a lot of things in this community, a lot of things for this community, and we'll continue to do so. This was, you know, I read the articles in the Advocate Messenger last week. I've never been quoted so much, I've never had a reporter call me in my life, but I will have to say, you know, meals, the meals and the services that any of these programs do, whether it be the Wool County Senior Center, or any other senior center in the Bluegrass Area Development District, comes from the Bluegrass Act. They took over the case management and the assessment back last July. They assess the client, and they send out a directive as to what that client gets, whether it be five hot meals a day, whether it be three hot meals a day and two frozen meals, however, but that comes from them, that's their decision, that is not based upon us or anybody else. As far as the comment that was made about staff in your facility, I have staff in the facility here daily. We have, we bring three busloads of adult A clients to the Wool County Senior Center, every day, those bus drivers work for me. My understanding is the senior center contracts with us occasionally through a bus to take clients to different places. You know, the classes and the tai chi, we offer tai chi, and yoga, and dancing, and a lot of other things. The mentality is, is a lot of these are mandated things by the funding source. So I guess my main thing here today is, I just want you all to understand, we're a program that's been around for fifty years, okay? We're not an outsider. We're an organization that has experience in doing Title III in home care, we're an organization that since 2012 has won the senior center of the year twice at two different facilities, 2012 in Scott County, 2015 in Bourbon County. We're an organization that proudly partners with all United Ways, including our Kentucky United Way. United Way, in our service area. We're an organization that is respected enough to obtain funding from local government, city and county in all of our nine counties. We're also an organization that ministers many federal and state programs in our communities. All programs refer not only internally, but to other social service groups and churches in our communities. We work with everybody.
It's fair to all, I'm going to ask you to wrap up because we had to do that to Mr. Rowland, I'm going to ask you.
Like I said, you guys, I think you know, we are an organization that does try to give back to our communities and we do that by doing a lot of things. Your own decision is your decision. We had, this was nothing more, it's been called a coup and a takeover in the paper. This was an RFP, which is a request for proposal from a funding source. And both of us bit on it. I lost home care in three counties and I had to appeal, but I did not take to the newspapers. And I also did not use seniors as a scare tactic, thinking they were not going to get the services that they deserve.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other, any other speakers on in support of Bluegrass Community Action? Anyone else? No questions? Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, your name, please.
Christine Freeman. I'm the Director of the Senior Companion Program for Bluegrass Community Action. I operate the Senior Companion Program in 10 counties, including Boyle. I do come to Boyle frequently. Boyle County has the biggest number of senior companions in any of my 10 counties. And not, I can't think of off the top of my head, but each one serves two to three clients, so each volunteer does. And right now, I have 13 volunteers. I think with this, with Bluegrass Community Action, I couldn't be prouder for working for an agency. We do so much good and I'm so passionate about what we do and what I do as a part of the organization. And the services provided are, they're outstanding. And I think if we were given the opportunity, it would be seen, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Your name, please.
My name is Jane Boy, and I'm, like Margaret mentioned, I'm an unpaid board member of Bluegrass Community Action Partnership. And I know the SOS would save our seniors, and I'm sure that everybody in this room, especially youth commissioners are concerned about that. My question is, save them from what? I have been very knowledgeable about BGCAP before I came on the board because I worked for several years at Hard Kentucky United Way. I know from my own experience, the challenges that have been with the center in the past several years in terms of board development, in terms of the application process, going back several years. Advocate did a great job of highlighting some of those things, questions that needed to be answered because there had been problems for the last several years. It certainly seems to me to be a fairly clear thing that if the application was rejected and the appeal was rejected, there's got to be some reason for that. And I have heard someone say that a win-win would be, the center's here, that there's a center here, there are programs and funding here. Why can't, if we're all concerned about the welfare of seniors, why can't we work together on that? If we ask for a show of hands, which I'm not going to do, everybody in this room wants the best for seniors. I think the responsibility is to look at how that can best be provided. I know from, again, from experience of being involved with BGCAP, their services, whether they're senior companions, senior citizens, they're well provided for and they do, they are a part of the community. And if you have trouble getting a bus, I think Victoria would be glad to talk to you because I know that that does work and it does make a difference in this community. So, good luck to you all. Thanks for serving on this commission and giving us time to speak.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for Bluegrass Community Action Partnership?
I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm the Director of Aging with Bluegrass Community Action Partnership. I've been with them for 12 years. I started out down from the bottom and I've worked my way up to be the Director of Aging. I stand behind Bluegrass Cap all the way. I've seen many seniors come through our programs, many of them moved to the state of Kentucky, lost. And wherever county that they moved into, we've helped them to succeed and to move beyond that loneliness. I think people are under the impression that the senior citizen center services would no longer be in this community, but we will see to it that they are here and that they are strong. I've watched the senior centers of our organization win Senior Center of the Year. I was one of the directors that brought the Scott County to Senior Center of the Year and went to accept the award with our director from Boyle County and their seniors. So I stand behind Bluegrass Cap all the way. And I think that the seniors were to give it a chance, they would see us as one of the organization, which shows us we're not being hurt. Jamie Albreton. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Would the commission like to have discussion or would the commission like to move to hear Mr. Scott's recommendation?
I would like to hear Mr. Scott's recommendations, but we want to not forget that there are other here in the public subjects. Are we technically in here in the public or are we?
I don't think we're here in the public.
Okay. Just checking. I think I took the site right, you did.
Mr. May, can I, move for a five-minute recess? I will take that motion.
Motion for Commissioner Atkins for a five-minute recess, second by Mr. Collins. All in favor of five minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so move five minutes. Ladies and gentlemen. All right. That was a short five minutes. With the commission's pleasure, I think it would be appropriate to hear Mr. Scott's thoughts at this point.
Is that mic ready?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to comment. I think we've heard a lot of good information tonight, some of which we may have known, probably some which we haven't known. I think there's more to learn and to consider because these programs are complicated. And I think a decision is premature tonight about that discussion, not only among the city and the county, but also between the two possible service providers here. And I think we need to collectively take two weeks and see if we can work out some better coordination of services locally, if that is possible, and make a decision on this at our next regular meeting, that being Tuesday following tomorrow day. And I say this in part because we have the seniors here tonight. And understandably, I've been at your center, I know what kind of services are there and how much you value them. I think we all have to be mindful now that that center in this community has lost, at least right now, $109,000 of federal funding. And that's going to be difficult to replace, not necessarily impossible, but difficult. And it has only a small local match. For example, $3,000 in match locally will trigger $40,000 of federal funds for the home pay for those services. And the questions I have, for example, are, what about those folks who are not here tonight? How are they going to get services with the loss of that $109,000? We're talking about several different programs here, some providing out of the local center directly there, others more remotely. So I think there's a lot of questions that we don't really have complete information on, full understanding of. Ideally, would involve a discussion, in my mind, not only with the city, but also jointly with the county in terms of how we can best serve our senior citizens with our resources that we have. And I think that's a big question that's very legitimate, one that we need to seriously consider in an instructive way. And I'm hopeful that within this next two weeks, we can have a series of meetings to really come to a better resolution on that. So in other words, Mr. Atkins, I don't really have an answer to that yet, other than the obvious. I think we need to take more time to ask questions and see if we can't develop a greater coordination. You know, these programs are federal, state, and local, and it requires some coordination of that in terms of money and the laborious services and so forth. So I'm, I'm just hoping that we can get a better answer.
I agree, Mr. Scott. Also, I think it would be very important for this community that, that we, time frame that the two groups that are discussing this tonight, someone take the leadership and get the two of them together. I volunteer my services to try to provide a compromise for the benefit of all the seniors in this community, myself included. Somebody on the way outside, I'll be doing the right. But this is really a very important decision. If I was really going to have enough money for one request, and that request needs to be, to meet the needs of the system, the needs of all the citizens in the community. So I offer the opportunity to get the group together to discuss and negotiate facility.
Any other comments from the commission?
I can cover with Mr. Atkins. Appreciate you stepping forward and taking leadership of that because we do, we have X amount of dollars that we want to give to the seniors, all the services we can while still be in good stewardship of the money. So that's, that's the quantity we're trying to set in. Hopefully, they can get together and do satisfactory solution.
Agreed over here as well. You know, we said in the previous meeting, the bottom line is for you folks out there, your senior citizens, so we're, we're going to try to make the best decision for you. I think information gathering is the way to do that.
I want these two organizations to work together. This is critical. One organization has the funding, the other, other organization has the building. You need each other. You need each other. And everybody needs to drop their territoriality and come together and make this senior citizens' center in Danville, Boyle County to be the best in our region. I think we are at that point where it's time to do that. I'm confident, Commissioner Atkins, will lead that charge. I was confident. But I'm, I'm serious when I say that. We're spending too much time, spending too much energy, and not getting anywhere. Enough said. Any further, then we'll move on to hear the public.